Okay, I will call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, staff is all present. Councilman Kinzer is, oh, just coming up, and present. We'll wait for you, Brenda, I know you're hurting. So, council, we have consent calendar items A through D. You know the drill.
Approve we accept items A through D.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Judith Dunley, seconded by Councilman Carnegie to approve consent calendar items A through D. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And consent is approved unanimously. I think I'm gonna run things a little bit different tonight if there's no objection from the council. Unfinished business, resolution establishing a public participation plan for library decision-making is clearly an interest item, and I suspect most of you are here tonight for that purpose, for to talk about the library. So I think if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to move that up and introduce the item, and then open that item for a public comment period before we discuss and decide what we're gonna do. Is there any objection to that procedure? Hearing none. Item five, which is your packet page thirty-nine to forty-three. Erin, do you want to introduce that, please?
Well, good evening, council. So, beginning on page thirty-nine is the council memo kind of describing what we're attempting to do with this resolution. You have heard that each of your council meetings, really since the second meeting in January, are concerned from members of the community that they haven't had, won't have, or are afraid that they won't have adequate opportunity to review and comment on any proposal that could potentially be voted on dealing with the city's library. So, just looking back on the timeline, and I know there's been a lot of frustration on all sides, essentially, at the end of 2012, a district was formed, very much with the support of the city community, the library community in the city. Then, from the period 2013 through 2015, there were very limited communications, and some of them were certainly strained. Then, on December fifteen of 2015, the city council and the library district met jointly here in this room to talk about the future and took public testimony. January twenty-one of sixteen, the newly-elected mayor presented a proposed concept of working together to build a bigger, better library with more materials, more programs, more space to serve the combined residents of the city and the district. And on February tenth, 2016, the city council took public testimony on that proposal. The district then responded to that proposal on April fifth of 2016, in writing, indicated a willingness to meet and had some of their interests and ideas. And the memo has two dates, the May nine, May thirty-one. There's been a third date since then, that was this Monday, June sixth. So there've been three meetings of the negotiating teams, which, again, for the city includes the mayor, me, our librarian, Deborah, and a member of the Board of Trustees, Margine Burke. So, where we are today is, we don't actually know if the negotiating team will come to terms with a concept that the parties want to recommend back to the city council and to the district board. But if they do, then what's proposed in the resolution is a formal process of public participation to let folks know that there will absolutely be an opportunity, a meaningful and robust opportunity, to engage at that point in time when something is known. So, procedurally, what would happen under this resolution is, if the negotiating teams come together with a concept that they agree upon enough to recommend back to their respective boards, then the first meeting, and here's what it says, is, "If and when a recommendation is forthcoming from the negotiating team, it will be presented for a first reading at a special meeting of the city council, with at least seven days prior notice to the public. It will be a workshop, open house format, to discuss the recommendation and allow for citizen participation." So that would be a different format than tonight, but one where there's more interactivity, the concept would be explained, you all would hear from the public, there'd be some colloquy, and ultimately, then, you, if you wanted to advance, would move to a second meeting, where you would also have an opportunity for public comment, more traditional format at the podium. And then, if you want to proceed, you would make a motion to essentially send your team back to the table with whatever changes may have come up during that interactive process with the public, to actually draft the document. So then, the negotiating team would get back together and work on an actual document that would address the original concept that was brought back to you as modified by whatever you choose to modify. And then, if we can come to terms on a written agreement, that would come back to you at a first reading for a regular meeting, there'd be a public hearing to take formal testimony regarding the draft. Of course, you would have the ability to make any changes that you want, send that back for further consideration. And then, there would be a second reading prior, which also would have public comment prior to any action. So, there would essentially be a minimum of four public meetings with public participation before a vote would be taken by the city council. This would be you establishing the framework, you know, your own rules for how you would do this. And separately, I just want to mention, item five in the resolution is addressing the needs assessment site library design process. So, really, running on a separate track from the conversations about possible partnership with the library district is the council's effort to understand what the community wants in a new library, and we're working with the district on this conversation. And then, ultimately, in this process, we'll be talking about what a library might look like and how space could be utilized. So, our contract with SHKS Architects includes two public meetings, one of which is an open house format, and their deliverable includes multiple site analysis, I think up to twelve sites. So, we'll have community engagement about where, within the central business district, a library should be. Of course, we'll be looking at the current library site as part of that process. We'll understand the needs, consider size, look at costs, and then ultimately, their final report will have a picture of a library with some basic space utilization and some rough costs, magnitude of costs. Pretty valuable information to be able to go back and complete the process that's happening with conversations with the district. Ultimately, what we decide to do will be driven by what the community wants and what we can afford. So, those things have to come together. And that's a process that, of course, you all kicked off, at least a few meetings ago, with SHKS after we went through the architectural selection process. And we're getting ready, then, to actually cut them loose to begin their work here pretty soon. So that's the concept. You know, we heard a lot from folks that, "We think you've already made a deal," that there's already a deal, that there's already a decision. That's not true, there isn't. There is nothing, actually, right now, but a conversation. And so, what could come from that conversation would be a concept, I imagine it would probably be a one- or two-page document that says, "We think, working together, we could do these things in this way." That's what would come back to you for the first two meetings and public conversation. Leaving that would be your direction on what you would want drafted into a formal agreement. And at each step, of course, you may decide you're not interested. And that's certainly your prerogative, you're the city council's prerogative. So, if I can answer any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward. State law doesn't require all these meetings, so just to be real clear, this is very much intended to go above and beyond the minimum requirements to ensure robust public participation. Any questions I can answer for the council?
So, council, unless I have an objection, I would like to open, on this topic, a public comment period. The rules will be the same as the open public comment period, which we will also have. So tonight's your chance to get two bites of the apple, as we say. You'll get your three minutes both times if you have a different thing to speak about.
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was curious, I don't know if it was addressed, how the meetings would be advertised?
Well, the resolution doesn't specifically say how they'd be advertised. You know, we're required, for all of our meetings, agendas have to be posted online. For the special meeting, which would be the first one, notices given to the press, we're required to do it twenty-four hours in advance. This resolution says seven days. We'll, of course, publicize it to, you know, our internet audience on the city's Facebook page, on our website, and the newspaper, you know, and hopefully, folks who are interested will be able to...
Just make sure we weren't relying on the newspaper, because, as we all know, it's not read.
Do you ever post things in the front doors, or in the lobby, and all that?
Yeah, that's a good point. All of our agendas are posted in the lobby. And any special meeting, we also post on both entrances to the building.
Anything else before we start? Okay, so I generally introduced the public comment period this way. I'll do so again. Remember, you are addressing city council, not each other. It's not a question-answer thing or a time for arguments. If anybody would like to speak on the public participation plan for library decision-making, you have three minutes at the podium. You may, I need you to state your name and your address for the record. Any takers? Yes, young man.
My name is Kindred Martin, 1009 Polty Road. Good evening. My name is Kindred Martin, and I live within the city of Cedar Valley at 1009 Polty Road. My mother has raised me by herself, and when I was very young, there wasn't a lot of extra money for fun and entertainment. One thing she always made sure that we both had, and we still do, was a local library card. Whether we lived in Birmingham, McConaughey, Burlington, or Cedar Valley, getting a library card was one of the first things on our to-do list. Going to a library was an outing that was guaranteed fun and adventure for me. I have a small child who spent countless hours and afternoons at the libraries, involved in different age-appropriate storytimes, craft times and activities, reading contests, musical performances, and many community gatherings. We have checked out countless books, music, movies, and magazines, all of which provided us with fun, entertainment, and education. I think libraries are a necessary piece of healthy families and children, and a healthy community. Now that I am a teenager, the library's become a meeting place for my friends and me, and a safe place to go after school. If I need to catch up on homework, need to use the computer, or if I just want to read. Going to a library is still an outing that is guaranteed to be a good time for me. His current location is in walking distance of most of the schools in town, is conveniently located next to a city park that I also use with my friends. I know that I and others are always welcome at the library, no one is turned away. I know that I can always ask questions about homework and school projects and get help with the library. I can't imagine not having convenient access to the library for the youth and teens of Cedar Valley, as well as the entire community. I hope you offer an opportunity for myself and the community to have our questions answered with open communication, as there has been such tremendous concern, interest, and, and interest in what's going on with the Cedar Valley Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Tommy, you can be proud of that. Good job. Anybody else who would like to speak on the public participation plan? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Wickers, 1201 Sixth Street, Cedar Valley. I am glad to see that the issue is being addressed. Thank you. I would highly recommend that the, how do I put it, for more robust communication, that before the negotiating team goes into any more time, effort, and money spent, that they gather input from the community for ideas. If it be from the architect or from open house meetings, either way, I think you're crippling the negotiating team by going in with just the opinions you have heard, one-sided, and having better input gives you more, how do I put it, a better spectrum to deal with. So you have more information to deal with and can make a better negotiation, if that's where it's headed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue?
Good evening. So I'm Christine Johnson, 801 McClean Drive. I just have a couple of things tonight. I'd like to echo what Sue said, that I'd really like for us to be able to get together and have interaction before anyone gets in negotiation. Because really, that is what is necessary for you to be able to negotiate. It's difficult for you to know what should be on the table in negotiations if you haven't discussed it with the shareholders, which is us, the people that care about our library. Second comment is that I am surprised it's a second reading, considerable business, because I've been to all these meetings, and I'm looking at all the information you get, and I have not seen a first reading before. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else?
Pat Hammond, 729 Sock Mountain Drive. I am very, very happy to see this come together, that all of us get to put input into this. It's very important. Libraries are extremely important to all of us, and I do want all of us to have access to a great public library. So thank you very much for bringing it together.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dorothy DeFermory, and I live at 316 Garden of Eden Road in town. This is the second time I've come to the meeting and heard a bunch of stuff beforehand and looked at my notes, and half of them are no longer necessary. But I do want to, because I don't think well on my feet, I do want to read what I have written, as much as I can. It seems to me that even counties that have, you know, a full county-wide library system still maintain a branch library, and so every city has their own home library. And I would really like to see that maintained, even if we go on and do anything in negotiation with the central library system. To touch and add a little humor, I just read a quote that I thought was pretty funny, and it said that "God made libraries so that people didn't have any excuse to be stupid." And respectfully speaking, I don't think our council wants to inherit the reputation of having given away its library collection. It just doesn't feel right. I can't see the pluses to a merger where what the Skagit Library District would offer in the way of value to our city taxpayers. I realize there's confusion, and I may have incorrect information, but it seems like if it's a council mimic bond, and we are building this building, but they are gonna run it, and they're gonna get our library collection, and there again, I may have incorrect information, but I see that as us losing a big piece of our heritage. The next paragraph Erin has answered, as far as that more open communication. I read, I went online and tried to get more information, because I realized from talking to people, I had missed some things. And I found a letter dated April twenty-seventh to the mayor and city council from the library board, which made it quite clear they did not accept the terms of the mayor's proposal, and were instead suggesting that Central Skagit Library District contract with the city library. And I hope that recommendation doesn't get disregarded. It feels like the Central Skagit, their concerns and opinions are being weighed more heavily than our own city libraries are.
How many seconds to go?
How much?
Another thirty?
Oh, good. I'll just...
You got time.
But since he revised the whole format, I have to take a little more time. The current building we have in town is eight thousand square feet, and what I'm hearing is approximately ten thousand square feet might be being considered. And the site that we're currently at is so centrally located to the senior center, community center, the park, where the summer programs can utilize the outside, and play areas, and it's just an ideal spot. And I think it could be expanded right there to meet the larger demand. I only have a little more.
I can give you a little bit to finish your thought.
Okay. I don't really understand why we've gone ahead spending twenty-five thousand dollars to develop a needs assessment for a new regional library. And it said in the online that we were gonna evaluate two other buildings as to suitability for remodeling. And I just am really concerned that we're going forward, and hopefully, this proposal to communicate will help avoid this, but I'm sure all of us here remember the garbage incinerator and the whole thing by the high school. And no one wants to see this go into litigious, nobody wants that again. I recognize so many of your faces, and I'm sure you don't want to go down that road. So...
I'll need you to finish up now, please.
Pardon?
Can you finish up, please?
Yes, I will. The last comment was, I've heard that part of the reason that they think ten thousand square feet is adequate is because there'd be more ebook-type things. And I think the elderly population, and I'm including myself, are used to books and want books, and we don't want ebooks. I don't know if that's a factor or not, but I think that, there again, these people have paid taxes for a long time, and...
Okay, thank you very much.
...risk that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's George Waller, north of Cedar Valley, out in the county.
I need an address, please.
George Waller.
Your address, please.
1641 State Highway nine, nine eight two eight four.
Got it.
First of all, I don't think there's any reason to, because this is, there's nothing in writing, there's nothing chipped in granite on this proposal. So, I think there's a lot from what I've heard the last few months, a lot of rumor and fear driving some of these discussions. Number two, personally, I don't think a merger is a loss of resources. You're transferring resources from one location, perhaps, to another. Maybe you're not. Depends on what the negotiations bring forth. And secondly, or thirdly, I believe that the council members and the mayor are always open to written emails, snail mail, and face-to-face communication with the public. And the public has no excuse not to be able to do this and get their questions answered in a timely fashion, so that, to eliminate a lot of fear and rumor that has driven this discussion up to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Lancaster, 210 West Nelson. And regarding the resolution, I'm very pleased to see it. I'm particularly pleased about the workshop and open house format, and encourage you to, having done some of these, to really find a good facilitation way, that can really help, that there's that process for both the partnership as well as for the design process. So thank you very much, and I encourage the council to approve the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Helga Anderson, nine two eight Beachley Road. It's gonna be short. I remember the last time, pardon me, I mentioned that may it should be taken for a vote, Mr. Mayor. This time, I'm just gonna suggest that perhaps it should be a contract period before a real merger might be proper, like an engagement before getting married, and let's see if the marriage actually work. Might be a proper way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Helga.
Loretta Saranen, eight two one Park Cottage Place. Good evening. I want to respectfully submit some additions and revisions to the library proposal. In my reference, I show page forty-two, excuse me, correction, page forty-two. This was when I was reading the packet online. Underwhere it says, "Consideration of possible partnership concept on item one, I would like to request that the notice to be, to the public, be at least ten days, a minimum of ten days, because of the schedule and everyone trying, because I have the luxury of time and can be here." Also, at the end of this sentence, a recommendation and allow for citizens to engage, and to engage with elected officials in the committee in a question-and-answer session. And then, on item two, I would like to request, at the end there where it says, "Additional opportunity for," I would like to propose, "citizen engagement and the addition of, that will include time for question and answers." So I want to also give my gratitude, express that, for the fact that we are exceeding the state minimum, that we are using the resources of our citizens, the good ideas and solutions, so I salute you. Also, I want to do my happy dance, because you have opened up this process, and I think that we will all benefit from this. And as the gentleman was saying, the perception is that there was fear and rancor. I think what there was, was lack of communication. Again, I would like to extend my apologies, since I'm up here before you in person, again, for exceeding the time limit. So, thank you, Mayor, City Council. And when I wrote to the group, I did not include the timekeeper. So I want to go ahead and apologize to you for exceeding the limit.
I resigned that, I resigned that gig.
Yeah, I'm keeping my own time.
Yeah, I'm keeping my own time now.
Too many of you found your faces.
Okay, but my apologies, and that's all, folks, okay? Have a good evening.
Thank you, Loretta. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the... I got one. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Amanda Sondag, S-O-N-D-A-G-H, 222 Bond Street. The problem is not that we do not have any information, the problem is we do not have a choice. I'm hearing the terms negotiating team, public participation plan, sentences such as a vote by a city council but not by the people of Cedar Wally. I'm hearing that you're working on a conversation, talking about where the new library will be, and completing the process. These words do not say to a person, "I am listening." It says, "We have made a decision, and we are going to do it. The only choice you have is to go with it, but we will give you a word on how to do it." I feel we are not getting the true right to write that we, the people of Cedar Wally, have to say yes or no. We want ideas, but within what we want, what we can afford. So can suddenly we afford this new building without having the full consent of the public? That, to me, seems disrespectful and illogical. Last, how is the current library not considered a historical building? A librarian herself told me it was made 100 years ago and is a Carnegie, which is supposedly rare. How about we make this a historical building?
Thank you, Amanda.
Just a correction, the Carnegie was turned into the gym. We have no Carnegie library here.
So anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment period on this resolution. And council, any further discussion?
Are we going to take into consideration Loretta's request for 10 days on those other statements? Or when you say at least seven days, does that still give us some options to do more than seven days?
Well, you can always exceed. This is intended to establish a minimum requirement. But if you want to change that, when you make a motion to adopt the resolution, looking at the recommendation on page 40, just add with the addition of a 10-day notice under item one. And then that would work.
So council, the next resolution is 943-16.
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to ask, I wanted to ask Loretta, she said something about in this, on page 42, there was a thing called additional communication. I was trying to find it in the document, but I couldn't find it. Where was that? What was the term that you used again?
It's consideration of possible partnership concept.
Well, yeah, that was her, I think, her second point.
The second point, if the consideration...
Loretta, can I ask you to come to the mic again, please, to answer councilman's question?
There is number two on that page.
Oh, for the consideration, okay.
Yeah. With additional opportunity.
The actual word.
Okay, yeah, for the consideration.
Okay.
And that one of the requests that I had was that there would be also a primitive question-and-answer session at both of these events, so that dialogue could be ensured because I think that is very important in order to glean information from everyone involved.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question. If by some chances did not pass tonight, are we able to pass a revised addition tonight?
It's up to the council.
Well, you could make a motion in terms of that...
You can amend it tonight, or you can pass it as it is, or...
The motion to adopt it could include whatever modifications you might like in it.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt modification that we put off any further negotiations until we have held this public forum.
Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
I heard concern about information, why go through further negotiations before we get public input. But we get public input at every meeting. We have our library director and a library board member who should be taking the concerns also to the negotiating team and negotiating those terms. So I assumed if we hear these, we hear concerns, we take them to our negotiating team, and the negotiating team, you know, gets our points down. So I think stopping negotiations is, you know, not giving information forward. That's how I see it.
So there's a motion on the table. Can you state your motion again one more time, Brett, so I make sure I have it?
I'd like to make a motion that we do not have any further library negotiation meetings until we're able to have the public forum to get more information to the public and for the public to share information with us. Okay?
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Kinzer to have no further negotiation with the library district until after a public forum is held. Did I get that correctly? And it was seconded by Councilman Owen. Any additional discussion? I can tell you that that will, in my opinion, cripple the work that we have done up to now, and I hope that the council will vote against that.
I have a comment regarding it. So we have heard some great information tonight. I've taken notes, I've listened to you, and as has everybody on the council, and so we hear your concerns. I would hope that you would trust us to take this information into consideration when we do go into negotiation, that we are thinking about you, we truly are. And so I don't see a need to stave or put off the negotiations because we can take this information now that we have and start implementing it and applying it to the negotiations.
Right. Yes, negotiations aren't necessarily, like someone said, signing anything in stone is just talking, which is what we're going to be doing at the meeting anyway. And I don't know if this is on topic or not, but I was actually, I still have questions about the meetings, like notifications, like if we have, if we do the 10 days, which is fine with me, but how often, what's the schedule? Like, I just want to make sure that enough notices are getting out. I know how I am. If I hear something 10 days ago, I don't remember right now. And so I wonder if, you know, that's so far out to do it, and we're not, I mean, like that's, seven days was already a lot. So I was wondering if we're going to do 10 days out, if we can, I mean, is it possible to do another one, like, you know, four days out, three days out, or something like that? Or how do you do that? And I'm not sure if that's off-topic, but that's kind of something I wanted to...
Well, we have a motion on the table, so I think you can address that after we finish the motion. So the motion was made and seconded, and is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to break off negotiation until a public forum is held, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Okay. The noes have it.
Do you want to show a hand?
Can I?
See, show hands, please.
I'm sorry.
Those who voted aye, raise your hand, please. Councilman Owen, Councilman Kinzer. All others are nay. So the motion fails. So we still have the resolution before us.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, or is it? Oh, okay. A resolution, where's the motion? Okay, 943-16, a resolution of the city of Cedar Wally, the city council of the city of Cedar Wally establishing a formal public participation plan for the discussions, or decisions regarding the Cedar Wally library, city library.
Second.
With the...
With the change, the 10-day...
Question-and-answer.
Yeah, with the...
That change...
At least a 10-day notice.
10-day and then...
And a possible additional form of, you know, a process within to be able to...
Answer form.
Maybe ask more public questions aloud and have responses heard by the group. I think that's probably what Loretta is looking for.
Right. Okay. Did you second the extended motion?
Yes, second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just, I like to come up with metaphors, and so I think Keith's original proposal was like a Jackson Pollock, really kind of messy and abstract, you know, this big gray mass or whatever, you know? And that was his proposal. The negotiating team is starting to whittle and form ideas, but right now, it's sort of like a Matisse, so it's modern art, you know, very abstract, but you could sort of see the humanoid that's within that abstract painting. And I think we're still, there's a finish line out there where it looks like, you know, a Rembrandt, but we're far from that process, I think. I think this process is going to help us refine that even more to what we want.
I thought I was the king of bad analogies.
Thank you, Brett.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question on what exactly your motion is. I understand the 10-day, the prior notice of at least 10 days. I'm unclear as to what your intention is with the other language.
Oh, well, I guess, I mean, I guess as part of the form, I don't know if we could set aside maybe 30 minutes to, you know, 20 minutes, I don't know, whatever the timeframe, maybe the council should decide that, but...
We're deciding it now, Brett, you need to articulate.
Well, I don't know. I mean, how much time does it, you know, we'll probably get 10 questions, maybe?
It says workshop, open house, so when we get there, we can decide on the format as far as questions and answers, which I think have to be integral in there.
Yeah, I mean, I, see, when I envision this, I envision like a roundabout meetings where we are down in the pit, talking with people. So I don't know, apart from what we do now, I don't want it to be this formal because then it makes it, I don't, I...
That's against them, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
That's why I was asking the question, is when we say workshop, open house, that is always how we've done that. So you literally have people around the room and folks talking to people, and it's entirely interactive. It's, what do you think about this? And so at the different locations, you've got maybe different topics, or I'm not sure exactly how we would handle this particular scenario, but different than this type of meeting. So that's all, I just wasn't sure in terms of my job of writing what your motion was, what it would say. I get the 10 days, I just wasn't sure how you want to address...
What about if there's a question that needs to be answered? They could write it down, and it could be addressed publicly if it's a valid point or something like that. So the key, you know, we could, as a council, and say, hey, I like this question, let's address this maybe more succinctly.
So does this need to be in the resolution or within your open house? I mean, you could say maybe something like, which will be a workshop, open house format that includes the opportunity for questions...
And answers.
To be asked and answers to be, you know, something like that. I guess I just want to make sure that what you're not imagining is council and mayor up here and people just lining up to fire off questions. You know, it's a format that's very dysfunctional structurally.
And it wouldn't work.
Right? That's why you don't allow it in your current rules at the public comment session, isn't it?
So is there a possibility, then, that if we put the notice out 10 days ahead of time, that people have the opportunity prior to the council meeting submitting their questions, and therefore it could be answered by the mayor?
That's always the case, though.
Say again?
That's always the case. Anybody can ask me a question at any time, and I always answer.
I mean, I'm saying that that should be part of the announcement.
But maybe we could get together as a group and review those questions of which is most, you know, probably...
With that being counsel.
You know, based in a real concern, and we could address them in that forum.
Well, you can't do that outside of a public meeting. I guess what I would say is that this language anticipated that there would be the opportunity for back-and-forth conversation. So I don't know if you want more detail than that. If you do, you know, add it, but that would be part of this workshop meeting, and certainly with a 10-day notice, we could talk prior to the meeting about how you want to structure it. So I wonder if that might not be adequate for getting the ball rolling.
Can I add that this is so, it's a discussion? I mean, if we don't, we're getting input right now, so if we're getting input, how are we going to answer questions? Because we're all on the same page, we don't know yet. That's why we're getting together to have a discussion.
Well, yeah, there are some questions.
I mean, like, questions, questions, but not like, you know...
We've heard at the microphone, for example, I've heard that I'll be required to buy a library card. It's an easy answer.
Yeah, that kind of stuff, yeah, that kind of stuff.
There's no scenario where the city will have an agreement where a citizen of the city Cedar Wally will have to buy a library card. So there are answers to questions that are out there, and we've talked about putting, trying to put together kind of a Q and A that could live on our website to address some of those things.
Okay.
What's challenging is that the A that we're giving there, the answer, is essentially what the mayor's negotiating team is saying it would be willing to bring to the council, right? Because we can't answer up what you would agree to. What we can say is, there's no scenario where we would bring an agreement to you that would include that, you know? Or, I mean, there's a whole list of things. So that's the challenge, is once there's a concept out there, then there would be answers, and there would be more specific answers to what does this mean, what did you intend?
Yep.
How would this work? You know, so I think there would be more known, whereas today, there are a number of questions, you know? How big would it be? Well, I don't know. We don't know. We don't, we don't have an answer to that question. Could I imagine a 10,000-square-foot library? Me personally, no. I think that would be too small. But that's an answer that's premature at this point. You know, the mayor's proposal was significantly larger than that, and that's really all we have today.
And in truth, you know, as you stated here, there may never be an answer. We may not come to agreement. So, you know, it's this nebulous, abstract ideas right now. But what I'm wondering is if, as far as submitting the questions, I really like what you're saying about putting together something either on Facebook or whatever, will people, when they do, submit questions? That there could be some sort of an answer, or even the answer, you know what? That's a great question, you know, it's, thank you for submitting that. I mean, even if we don't have the answer to it. Right, exactly, yeah.
So Brett, you were here at the last construction project, open forum.
Last questions, right there.
You're out there with the people.
They're asking you questions.
They're asking you questions.
Yeah.
That's what this is.
Does that satisfy you, Loretta?
Well, I'm enchanted that you're having this discussion because this is what I'm envisioning, and that the fact that there hasn't been, it's very frustrating as a citizen to talk to and not to get any information back, to get any information that is not included. So I would welcome this opportunity, and to know that if you don't know that, and don't have an answer, or don't know the answer, that you can get back to people, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Brett, can you restate your motion?
I revise my motion just to at least give a notice of 10 days.
Are you still going to second that motion, Councilman Carnegie?
Can we restate it because...
Go ahead and go through the whole thing because Brett...
Round and round.
All right, I'd like to make a...
I think I understand it. So correct me if I'm wrong, Brett.
So I'd like to make a motion for a resolution, 943-16, a resolution of the city council of Cedar Wally establishing a formal public participation plan for decision regarding the Cedar Wally city library, with the notice being extended to at least 10 days.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion now that the motion is called? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Councilman Kinzer is to the negative, motion carries. You shouldn't say that negative, nay. Okay, so we got a little bit out of order there, but I felt it was important to do that. What is next? What is next? I think public comment period. Jack, I know I have kept you waiting a long time, I'm sorry about that. Let me get back up there.
Yeah, that's...
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Judith. So at this time, it's a public comment period, you do get to comment again. As I stated earlier on, the rules remain the same, address the council, not each other, it's not a time for argument or cross-examination and because Jack has been very patient with us and he's not here about libraries, I will offer you the podium first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jack and this is my wife Shannon, last name Moore. We live at 402 Burrows Lane and I did stop by earlier today and drop off a letter and speak with the mayor and hopefully all of you did receive a copy of that as a lay material. But I wanted, we wanted to come here in person and just thank you for your continued focus on keeping our neighborhoods safe, enjoyable, livable, and keeping our community a place where we want to continue to live and, and in our hometown. Specifically, we had a case recently where we had a dilapidated structure in our neighborhood that was attracting some things that we didn't need to have in our neighborhood and people and activities. So thank you again for your, your focus for that. I do want to thank also City Supervisor Aaron Berg, Chief Tucker, and Officer Carr for their specific efforts in working with the property owner and encouraging the property owner to, to rectify that situation. I know I've spoken with at least four of my neighbors on Burrows Lane and while they're not here tonight, they were all extremely pleased at the, the action that happened and the structure was removed by the property owner, so it was no longer an attractive public nuisance. So again, thank you, appreciate all of your efforts and all you do in keeping this, our hometown, a place we want to live.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I know that sometimes these things take a lot longer than we think we should. We see the problem, we just want to go fix it, but there is a due process and it does take time and I appreciate your patience in that and thanks to the force. Tell Laura she got special mention tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else up for a public comment period?
Hello again, excuse me. So Christine Johnson, 801 McLean. One thing I would like to point out, because you guys at one point did start talking about looking at the rules and regulations for input at these meetings, is that Mount Vernon residents get to speak for five minutes at their meetings. And not only do they get to speak at the city council meetings, but they also get to speak at the work sessions. So every single week, they do get five minutes, so I'd like you to think about that. And also, I just of course want to say that please don't keep away from our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment period? Yes, sir.
Your name is Steve?
Oh, certainly.
I'm into this one, I'll leave with you, but...
Thank you.
My name is Steve Cryne, I live at 8053 State Route 9, just outside of the city limits, so thank you for letting me be here. I just have a request about sewer. I live just beyond the city limits, but the plan is already in place to annex our neighborhood. As soon as that goes through, the sewer will be available to us. I have a house that was built in 1947, the septic system is, is still working, but I've had to, had to have it pumped twice in three years and I just assume hook up to the city sewer if it's possible, if we can find a way to do that. It'd be cheaper than doing another septic system that's going to fail eventually anyway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and we'll move to item six, new business, proposed revisions to Seidewolli Municipal Code 15.04, local amendments to adopt state building codes. And this is John, it's page 44 through 55 of your packets.
Good evening. So every three years, the state adopts updated building codes, that's the whole suite of international codes, international building code, residential code, property maintenance code, fire code, there's a whole suite of about 12 different books that we, that are adopted by the state every year, or every third year, I should say. And the last, the last round was the 2012 version, now there's a 2015 version that would automatically go into effect on July 1st of 2016. Over the past year since the 2015 came out, the Washington State Building Code Council has been reviewing it and making revised state amendments and so every year, they include state amendments, which are also, you know, numerous pages, that are additions or changes to the, the published ICC versions. So the state requires that we adopt all of the building codes or all, all of these codes as modified by the state and they automatically go into effect on July 1st of 2016, as I mentioned. The local jurisdictions have the ability to make minor modifications to the, what they choose to adopt. Each of these codes come with a whole bunch of extra appendices that you can adopt, but are not adopted otherwise. So when we last adopted, or the past, the past couple of times that we've had to adopt new building codes or revised building codes, we haven't really changed a whole lot and that's again what we propose to do this year. The ordinance that you see is just, you can see most of the, the changes are, you strike out the 2012 version and adopt the 2015 version. We're not, we're not recommending any additional changes, with the exception of, you may notice in here that under the fire code, we had originally, in this draft part, suggested that we adopt chapter N of the Washington State Amendments regarding inner, this is a strange one, 2015 wildland and urban interface code for the fire code. So basically, it's a little, little one-page section that talks about how to address urban wild, urban fire at the edge of urban areas. That's actually optional, the, since then, the chief has said that he would not like to adopt that, so in the next version of this resolution that you'll see at the second reading, I'm actually going to strike adopting chap, appendix N. Otherwise, there's really no significant changes besides adopting the updated versions.
And John, we have typically not adopted that in the past, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
The, the reason I put it in there is the state language was, is very confusing about whether or not we're required to. For a second there, I thought maybe we were required to, so I put it in here, talked to chief later and he said, no, I don't think we need to adopt that, we never have in the past, so please, let's not do that.
So that's why we have a chief to check up on us.
Yeah, the fire code's really his purview and I just didn't have the opportunity to get comments back from him before it got to the council, but I wanted to get it to you in a timely fashion. As I said, it has to be adopted by July 1st, so since we have two reads, it needed to be here today so it could be at the July, or the June 22nd.
Okay, very good. So council, unless you have questions for John now or, or questions of Chief Klinger when he gets back, this is a first read and no action required.
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me, my computer's freezing up. There we go. Chief.
So some of you may have heard a lot of the publicity we'd be getting on the internet exchange sites we have up front. This has been amazing. This really came from Paul Eaton reviewing our Facebook page and those of you who may not know, Paul Eaton is pretty much our Facebook editor. He is the one that's been keeping things updated and I give him information to put on there and everybody's feeding him information, but he's kind of our gatekeeper for the Facebook page. He got, somebody sent a message on Facebook saying, hey, this seems like a good idea, I've seen this other places. He did a little research, talked to Aaron, we got a plan put together, invested in two signs, we had the street crew, David Davidson came up and did the signs out front. You'd have thought that we had built the pyramids, invented sliced bread, baloney, whatever invention is the most awesomest thing. I got to go on the Brad and John Show on KISM yesterday and talk to them about it and Seidewolli had an extremely positive life. King Five had it on their website and we're getting all sorts of good input on that. I honestly don't know how much it's going to be used, but it's there for the using.
You know, did you know that, that Q 13 also, they, they put it on the air?
I missed their phone call, it was my birthday yesterday.
Happy birthday.
And I was busy birthday-ing.
Bible.
Pretty close, pretty close. But I missed the, I missed Q 13's call and they were going to send a crew out on Monday, I think. So we got a lot of, you know, the Herald did something on it and it's really been pretty popular and hopefully we'll get some use out of it. And I'd even thought expanding it, maybe if you had a match.com, you can bring your boyfriend past there, we'll get him on there, but that's something completely, that's something completely differing. Next thing is Sergeant Pierce is coming back from his Coast Guard deployment here real soon. We expect him by the end of the month, we're going to have a little welcome back for him and then start reintegrating him back into patrol. We got a plan for him working with Sergeant McElwath, our other night shift sergeant, and basically retraining him away from his Coast Guard duty back into police sergeant. So we should be Dave getting back and we're going to be, thanks to all of you and Aaron and Patsy for finding the money to hire all these people, putting everybody on the road and keeping all these bodies out there on the road. I got my new truck, is out getting the radios in it and outfitted and there's kind of a cascading effect with that. I got a new vehicle, but also that's going to give us a, a better vehicle for our crime watchers, which thanks to Chuck over there, he's kind of helping come up with some ideas on how to use our crime watch and working with Sergeant Blunt to put together kind of a plan on how to expand our crime watch crew. They're going to be driving my old blue car around town here, hopefully first to next month and keeping, keeping extra eyes out on the street. We got a really good bunch of people working on our crime watch and want to give them the tools to go out and do a good job. That also is going to give us one more car that, I'm going to talk to Aaron to see if any other department in the city needs a kind of banged up 1998 Crown Victoria that's, you know, got, got a few miles on it, but see if they need that or we're going to surplus that. And finally, one of our biggest issues we're dealing with right now, and many of you may have seen this, some of our homeless issues and the problems that that's causing downtown. We've tried working with some of these folks, I tried shutting off the alcohol supply to them, they just go further afield to get their alcohol. And it's, it's not necessarily just a homeless problem, but there's some mental health issues going on there and some substance abuse problems. The two or three that are our major concern are really just nuisance concerns unless you're a business owner downtown and have that nuisance sleeping on a park bench. Aaron and I both have taken a look at Mount Vernon, it's got a comprehensive plan for dealing with some homeless issues. Seidewolli has five or six people with homeless issues causing us problems downtown. Last count, Mount Vernon had over 200, almost 300.
Wow.
That were, that were hitting their radar. So not necessarily to the level we're dealing with, but they've got, they've got a serious problem. They actually have, now are working on having an embedded social worker with the police department. So we got some, we got some things in work for that, but it's kind of a constant struggle. We're dealing with one in particular that insists on being seen by the police, fire, EMS several times a day and we're working on that. So it's an ongoing project, but if you see these problems or hearing these from anybody, that people are having a specific problem that we can address, make sure you forward that information to me or Jason and we'll, we'll address it as best we can. We got a couple of places that are camping out and on private property and we're trying to change that, but anything you can do to help point us in the direction if we're missing something, we're glad to hear from that because we want to try to address that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes, I'd like to give a public recognition to Mark Nyslinger, the owner over here at 500 Metcalf. They let us use their T building over there for search and rescue training, firefighter survival training, firefighter rescue training, and it was very successful. Our crews have been extremely busy and just like today, we had two rescues. We had a 13-year-old who was in a, the child swing, got stuck.
Oh.
And so we had to rescue her out. We had to cut the seat, but we could, we got her out. We had a person trapped in the elevator, the elevator stopped at between second and third floor and we rescued them out, so. And then we had about six, eight or med calls today, so pretty, pretty busy day.
Okay, thank you, Todd. John?
Well, the urban growth area expansion request saga continues. The, as, as the last update was, it went to the planning commission and even though it was a little bit of a rough meeting, several meetings with that, the planning commission recommended to expand our urban growth area to the north and accept the city-owned property to the west, the five-acre parcel. So that's being packaged together and brought to the county commissioners. So the, the planning staff presented that, the entire comprehensive plan docket to the, the board of county commissioners yesterday. They had a discussion about various items that the planning commission recommended and so they wanted to see a few things changed. Our urban growth area is not one of those things that are going to be changed, however, they're having another public hearing in front of the board of county commissioners on the entire comprehensive plan. They're trying to focus it on just those few things that, that the board of county commissioners wanted to look a little closer at. Again, that's not related to our urban growth area, however, since they are having an open public comment period again on the entire comp plan, I'll be there to make sure that we, our voice gets heard. That will be on Monday, the 20th in the evening, so one more night meeting for the planning department. But that, we don't anticipate any problems, I just want to let the council know what's going on with that. And I think that's all I got for right now. We did receive a letter from the, one more thing, we did receive a letter from Ecology accepting our adopted shoreline management program, so that should be, with that letter of acceptance, it now goes into effect 14 days from when we passed it, so that was, it might be, it might be, it might be in effect by now.
Okay.
I forget what that date is, but it's just the final step and we've achieved that final step. I thought I'd let the city council know. Thanks.
Okay, John, thank you. Mark, we've got a lot going on.
Yes, I won't take too much of your time. The Jamison Project is continuing. I wanted to let you know that the detour for Rhodes Road will go into effect on Monday. So if you, if you have been used to accessing Rhodes Road from Highway 9, you won't be able to do that, you'll have to go West State or Highway 20 to get there. It'll be properly signed. We've had message board signs up for two weeks now with that date on it and I updated the public notice on the website last week with that information, so we're trying to get that message out to everyone, but I'm sure it's still going to be a surprise to some. So that's happening. They will be paving the temporary lanes that will go in on the... They will be paving the temporary lanes that will go in on the east side of SR9 to allow them to build the center part of the roundabout in the middle of the road, probably the first of next week. They've got it pretty well prepared. If you've been by there, the grade has been made. And then they'll move right into building the roundabout itself in the following week. There's quite a bit of clearing yet to do once they get the Rhodes Road shut down at the southwest corner of the intersection, some pretty large cottonwoods and other things down off the bank that have to come out to build the fill. So that project's moving along okay. We've been struggling getting approved traffic control plans from DOT. I might have expressed some of that frustration last meeting. We have got the first stage approved, and we expect the second one in the next couple of days, which will allow us to continue without any delays. Also, the sidewalk work on the ferry overlay job is complete. We found out how to actually get the railroad to respond to us. You go and work on there right away, and lo and behold, they actually show up. We've been emailing and calling them, everybody that we know, for weeks to get them to coordinate with our project, and they just simply haven't responded. And that's pretty typical of our relationship with BNSF. So if we need to get ahold of them in the future, we're just planning on parking a firetruck in the middle of the railroad tracks or something like that. And we figure they'll show up then. Yeah, 98 Crown vehicle work really well. That overlay also includes the part of township south of Highway 20 down to Waldron. It's a little stretch that never has seen any upgrade work since we started doing all the other sewer replacements and all that back in '07 and '06. So that'll be a part of the project as well. Should be minimal traffic disruption. We continue traffic with one-way control through the work zone as we're doing overlays. They'll be grinding first, and that's gonna happen tomorrow, and then they'll be getting ready to put the asphalt down within a few days of that. David Lee continues to design on the Cascade Trail expansion from Hodgins to Highway 9 South. We hope to have that out to bid in the next three or four weeks. The Fruitdale arterial project, we're expecting the next milestone submittal from the consultant for the 70% plans. And that'll include the engineer's estimate and also the specification package. So we'll get to see if my guess on how much that was gonna cost is anywhere close, and we'll go forward on that. We had the TIB meeting for their grant programs two weeks ago in Burlington, and they have some nice programs for us. There's, in addition to the Fruitdale project, the state has funded a pretty significant program to encourage cities to, who have either adopted or will adopt a complete streets program, to continue that process. And they're actually gonna just, for cities that are nominated by partner agencies like DOT or Bikes Washington or one of those outfits, they will actually give us the money upfront, up to $500,000. We wouldn't expect to see that much, but maybe a couple of hundred thousand, which would go a great long way to helping us update our sidewalks and the American Disabilities Act's issues that I've been voicing here for the last year or two and telling you how little money we've had to do that. And it's not a one-time thing. It will actually be something that they'll give you an amount of money, and you'll have three years to spend it. Once you've spent it, you can apply again and get another pot. So we can spend it pretty handily, as you know, around here, so we'll try to beat that three years pretty quickly. So also, next council meeting, you'll have the public hearing and the first reading for the 2017 to 2022 six-year transportation improvement plan. That's something we do every year. This year, it will be incorporating all of the things that you saw in the Chapter Three Transportation Plan element of the comprehensive plan, which was passed here a couple of weeks ago. And so in conjunction with that, you will also have another ordinance on there for a first read for the update of the transportation impact fee schedule. That's kinda, it needs to run in lockstep with the comprehensive plan. And so we'll have that for a first read as well. And then on July the 13th, if you're satisfied with the presentation and the program that we're proposing, we'd ask for action on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Aaron?
If my memory serves me correctly, the council did adopt a complete streets program.
We have that in place, but we actually feel like we're ahead of the game. Expert seat on that one, so.
Well, 2016 started off with a bang and just hasn't slowed down yet. So a couple of highlights from your last meeting. But first, the City Scene Magazine deadline, which seemed so far away, is now very near, June 20th. So for any of you who may be intending to submit articles for publication, you have just over a week. The jail project continues to progress, really with no change since the last report. And we did have a tour that included about half the city council. We'll set up another one for you when you're ready to kinda see the next stages of that project. The Swift Center, several things have happened since we last talked. We met with Representative Smith on site last week, as I recall. That's the Sidewally Innovation for Tomorrow Center, Swift Center. And we had a, I think it was a productive meeting. She's already scheduling to come back again because she just couldn't get enough of the tour in on that day. But was very helpful, very engaged. It's clearly a priority project for her, which we appreciated hearing. On the mental health piece of that, the county kinda wrapped up its process with a community report last Friday at the Best Western Cotton Tree. I attended that on behalf of the city, kinda heard the recommendations, and I anticipate that the city will continue to be a partner with the county in terms of making legislative requests to support the revision of the mental health system and for the county to become a pilot project as they look to the future on that. So very significant, very interesting, great opportunity right now to do something different, better, in partnership with the North Sound Region, the five counties. They're pulling together all the counties. It just seems like everywhere I look, it's partnerships resulting in success, whether it's the Swift Center project itself, or now the mental health piece spinning out of that, the jail, or the next item we're talking about is our emergency medical system. Work group came together again. We had one meeting, I guess, earlier this week. That process is continuing on. The interesting turn of events there, which is sort of separate from the work group, is that the county has signed an agreement with Fire District 13, bringing them now in as a BLS provider, just like Sidewally Fire Department. So they went live here earlier this week and are now doing transports in partnership with the city of Anacortes. As a spinoff of the EMS work group, we've got a smaller group that includes the BLS transport entities, which is now Fire 13 over on Fidalgo Island and a little bit around La Conner, Pleasant Ridge areas. City of Sidewally, and then both the city of Anacortes as the primary provider and Central Valley Ambulance Authority. So I think, I'm expecting that we will see more transports as a result of this. Part of our objective is to really, really test how BLS integration works for the system. So my pitch has been, let us transport as much as we're capable for a period of time, and then let's all sit back and study the data and understand its effect on the system. The other thing we learned, again, this is probably about the third time it's come up, is we had a detailed conversation about GEMT, which is Ground-Based Emergency Medical Transportation. It's a federal Medicare/Medicaid subsidy program that the state of Washington has just begun participating in. It's a program that we won't be able to get funded through until later in the year, possibly even next year. But the funding began on June 2nd, and our city is one of the entities in Skagit County that will qualify. So I've got the, they're looking at it right now to try to give us a, kind of a magnitude of qualification. Essentially, the way this works is Washington State is a 50-50 partner with the feds on Medicare/Medicaid programs through Apple Health. And what they do is they look at what we spend on our department to provide EMS services. They kinda calculate how many are their customers, that is, through Apple Health and Medicaid, and then they look at the differential between what they pay us and what it costs us. And then they split that with us 50-50. So the consultants talking to the county estimated that the differential for the county as a system, looking just at Central Valley Ambulance Authority and our Skagit, was about $2.1 million a year. I'm not sure where we're gonna fall. I'm thinking it's probably in the $1 to $200,000 range, but I don't quite know yet. So stay tuned on that. And then lastly, on the STEM, Superintendent of Schools, Phil Brockman, and I, along with our project manager, Michelle Judson, made a presentation last week to the chamber luncheon. And then yesterday, we were at Skagit County. So if you're interested in getting the report in a non-live format, you can see it on their Channel 21 rebroadcast. So we gave about a 20, I guess it took about 30 minutes with some commissioner comments and questions, giving the status of our STEM network. And I guess what I'd like to report on that is, besides just how exciting it is to see what the school's already engaged in and how we're able to help by coming to the table to partner and bring some of the businesses to the table. We've added more businesses, most recently PACR specifically asked to be a committed partner to our network. And every indication is that Washington STEM will be funding the STEM network for $100,000 a year for an additional two to three years. The message seems to be not that it's an opportunity to ask, but that it's really very likely to be ours as long as we're continuing down our path. And Michelle came back from the STEM Network State meeting, and we're just getting a lot of positives for how much this network is moving forward and also how different it is. It's a little unique to have a school in the city leading the charge. There are other networks where the school's not involved. I can't imagine how that would work. And very few networks where the city is involved. So having the school, the city, and the business community aligned seems to be a really powerful force for the network. We'll be presenting at the EDSC board meeting next week. And then lastly, I just want to report that on behalf of the mayor, I brought home the first-place finish on the jump rope contest this weekend at the Blast from the Past.
And I planned it that way, just like that. No, actually, I lost, is what he's saying.
But the runner-up was the mayor of concrete, and that just couldn't stand.
Did you have an alibi, Mark?
I just wanted to follow up on the gentleman's request for the sewer service on North Township there. If it's the council's wish, I can bring that back as an actual request. I have met with him, and it appears to be feasible and supportable, being in the annexation area, and it makes a lot of sense just to cede to his request, so.
I just looked up his address. He's a little beyond where our current sewer goes. And should our urban growth area expansion go as planned, he would be in the urban growth area, which time would be up to the council to pass a resolution or motion stating that they'd be willing to extend sewer to his property, usually on the condition that he approves to be annexed in the future, should an annexation happen. Otherwise, we encourage property owners to annex into the city. So otherwise, we're not allowed to extend sewer outside of the urban growth area. So once he, once the property is part of the urban growth area, we can have further conversations on what the options are.
Okay, well, it sounds like common sense to me. Does consensus from the council for Mark to go ahead and research this and bring it to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes. Patsy?
Excuse me. I participated in a webinar earlier this week on the transportation benefit districts in which Department of Licensing spent most of the time explaining why there have been so many errors in the billing. Basically, what they said was their antiquated system will not interface with Department of Revenue's GIS system. So there's all these errors in billing. They expect their new system to be in line by December of this year. So until that point in time, you will continue to see requests on council, you know, in the payables for refunds. And if you do run across people who are complaining about how they live outside the city but yet they're being charged, please encourage them to come by the finance department, and we can work on that refund for them. An item you might find of interest is DOL also spoke of several sub-agent fraud situations in which the sub-agents had processed, we'll just say, hundreds of automobiles to the same address outside of the city limits, which thereby allowing the owners to avoid these fees. So that too was of great interest to me. Last week, we spent a full day training on the new enhancement to our financial software that the primary purpose was to allow the electronic processing of the over $500 bank, 500, excuse me, bank-generated checks that we receive each month. I'm pleased to report that the system really works well. It interfaces exceptionally good, and it's really easy. An additional benefit to citizens is that they can now go to the Express Bill Pay website and pay their bills. You know, they'll see the bill. It'll look pretty much like what they get in the mail. They can have paperless billing, and they can pay by credit card, debit card, or electronic check. Email confirmations of payments will be sent to them. And something we have been unable to do until now is to offer auto-pay credit card payments. None of the banks allow that through the kind of auto-pay system we've used in the past. But this will allow that, so you can set your bill to be paid and go tour the world and not worry about it. Benefits to the city would include, besides the time savings of those electronic checks, saving of printing and mailing costs of both the bills and all the inserts for people who sign up for paperless bill pay. It hopefully will eliminate all the landlord calls we receive during the month inquiring as to whether or not their tenants paid their bill. And are we going to file a lien soon? They can go online and look and see if the tenant paid or not. And it will also eliminate all the manual credit card, well, maybe not all, but a good portion of the manual credit card payments that we receive every month, some by phone because we can't do the auto pay. But now we can just direct all those folks to the website. We've been, you know, in training. We just learned last week, so we haven't made it known to the world yet. We've been handing out these little cards at the counter, and when people call in, informing them, so we can kinda get our feet wet before we, you know, get too many requests. The Express Bill Pay people have their own help desks. You know, if people have problems doing things, they'll walk you through step by step. And we've really been impressed and are very pleased. There'll be a notice in the bill next month explaining and giving the website address. Bill is currently working on a link from the city website to go over to Express Bill Pay. So that's the exciting news from the finance department.
All right. Judith? Jermaine?
Oh, no, this is your mailie wick, isn't it?
Yeah, but I thought you, yeah.
No, I had it up there just to remind you.
Oh, well, I guess, oh, I didn't realize I was gonna do that one. I'm not even gonna be here, unfortunately. So on Saturday, June, so that's, yeah, next Saturday, June 18th, I believe, that's Saturday, from 10:00 to 12:30, they're gonna do like an open house, I guess you could say, at the Tesseric Park. And I think it's on like a...
And it's the official dedication of the park.
Yeah, it's a dedication of the...
Yeah, yeah. And so that's one, I guess I was gonna read, and...
Because it's Parks Department, I gave it to her.
I was gonna talk, I was gonna talk about the Blast from the Past last weekend, which was really a lot of fun. It seemed really crowded, and of course, it was really hot. And it was fun doing the hula hoop contest. Showed up with my industrial-sized hula hoop and won. And I will say that the mayor looked really good losing. He was really fancy, but slow and steady wins the race. That will be Aaron. So that was a lot of fun. but slow and steady wins the race. That will be Erin. So that was a lot of fun. Another thing was tomorrow night, the Oasis Teen Shelter that's in Mount Vernon, they're doing their silent auction for their art. They do it every year. So they're having that at the Skagit Valley College tomorrow. It starts at 12 o'clock, it ends at 5:30. And you don't have to be there, they'll hold the pieces for you. But the silent auction goes on through that time. And it's just called Oasis Silent Teen Art Auction. And that's in the lobby at the college. So that's it.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Okay.
Julia?
So I had the honor, I traveled with my husband and others to Ireland and just returned. And I had the honor of meeting the mayor of Kilkenny, Ireland. And I knew we were going to be doing that. So I contacted the mayor, our mayor, who wrote a wonderful letter, really a very wonderful letter to Mayor Joe Malone. And he met me in Silver Gale. And I acted as the emissary for the mayor. And we had quite a conversation about the differences in city politics. It was a lot of fun. But the reason I'm sharing this is because he really wanted me to greet the fine folks of Seadruly. And he said, if he ever makes it over this way, he's going to come for a visit. So that would be grand. Anyway, just wanted to share that.
Nice. Thank you. Chuck?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to tell Chief Tucker that I had the privilege of riding with one of his officers Saturday afternoon, Rhonda. And it was a very eventful evening. There was not a lot of action going on, but I was impressed with her professionalism too, as Brian was. And she's very dedicated. She loves her job. And I just want to continue through your employees and I'm going to continue to ride with each and every one of them if I can and get to know them. There's so many of your officers that I don't even know. And I just want to tell you that so far that I've seen, you have some real fine people. And again, I want to thank Erin for having us on that little tour of the jail. Kind of premature, but I hope when they get the slab poured and the roof on, and maybe the cages attached, we can go back and go through it again. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chuck. Brett?
First of all, on Monday, I actually went down to sanitation and recycle department. And Leo's got that laid out quite nice, a lot of expandability. I think it'll be a nice venture for all those people coming from out of the area to bring their wares for him to recycle and things. Hopefully, that'll be a big boon to us. But to expel on the Blast from the Past last weekend, yeah, we had, I'm going to say thousands of people in town over the three-day event. Hot. Motorcycle show went well, had a reasonable turnout of bikes for that. Car show, we had 153 cars for that. Some beautiful machinery showed up in town. A lot of people were really excited to see all those vehicles. And things went well. And vendors seemed to be glad for the event. Sunday was a little warm, I think, and not as many people showed up. But Saturday, they were very busy. All of them seemed to be glad that they had come and expressed that they'll be back again. Many of them have been coming for 10 and 15 years, for some of them. But always a good event for the committee down here. And the girls from the Chamber, Stacy volunteered. The guys from Les Schwab kicked in. The guys from Modified Lifestyle's Car Club kicked in to help with that event. Just a lot of people, all came together and helped pull this event off. And thanks to everybody that did that. Justin Ward kind of spearheaded the committee for that, put in a lot of hours for doing that. So thanks and congrats to all those people that were involved in that event. It's good for the city.
Brett?
Mark, when you brought up roads being closed, it reminded me to ask you, the folks on Heather Lane, well, I think last summer had some sort of repair done to the road, but it was never finished. And they wanted to know when it might be finished or what's still to be done.
Yeah, we were just over there. It's being done.
Yes. We actually, last year, we pre-leveled that. We didn't have enough budget to include it in the chip seal program last year. So that's on our list for this year. And we don't have a firm schedule for that yet. That particular part may happen earlier than the rest of our chip seal program because it's in a different county district. They do the chip seal for us. So that may happen as early as July. August for sure, that's when we're going to do all of the other streets. So it's coming.
Thanks.
Anything else?
So I had to rush over here because I was at the kids' awards night and didn't get to see my son because we start at seven. But we had so many kids there. And I heard Chris's name called out. And I'm sure he got called out more times because he's an amazing student. If you don't know, Chris Shahar is one of our valedictorians this year. So congratulations to you, parents. Our kids had over $8 million in scholarships that were being awarded tonight. So that says a lot about our school district. And while I'm on that topic, although sometimes I complain the paper doesn't treat us that nice, girls' tennis player of the year is Cassidy Bucie. Also, male track star of the year is Billy Hornback, Seadruly. So we've got a bunch of great kids and it's just a lot of fun to go see them, get their awards, and see them get recognized like this. And...
We have...
I'm not done.
Okay, good.
I talked to some of you about Memorial Day weekend, but we haven't had a city council meeting for that. The cemetery looked fantastic, as it must every year, and they keep it in great shape. I had a chance to talk to the maintenance staff and congratulate them on that. Thanks to all of them, because if it doesn't look right on Memorial Day, you know who's going to hear about it. It looked fantastic. So I appreciate all that work. And the Blast from the Past, our Parks guys were on stuff. And, you know, I was checking the toilets, got one blocked up. They were over there, got it fixed. So it was a great, two weekends in a row. And I appreciate all your help. Now, I should say, you think you're out of here, say, council, but you're not. We'll be going into executive session for about 15 minutes under RCW 42.30.140, Subparagraph 4, collective bargaining, about 15 minutes. There will be action requested. I don't expect it will be too exciting. So for the rest of you, if you don't decide to stick around for that 15 minutes, have a great evening and thank you for coming. Did you have anything beyond that, Erin? That was it, right? You thought I forgot. I didn't. So we're going into executive at 8:37 for about 15 minutes. My gavel is gone. So we're out of executive session at 8:58. And there is action requested.
Counsel, anybody remember the motion?
Terminology.
Erin would like to restate the motion to approve the...
The request is a motion to approve the draft memorandum of agreement between the city and AFSMI Local 176 SW regarding step placement for recent hires.
So moved?
Second.
So the motion was read and made by Judith Dunley and seconded by Councilman Lemley. Any further discussion? All are paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next motion?
Like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, then we're done.